I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I believe we only have one item on the agenda, so is that where we start?
Yes ma'am, so as a special meeting, that's statutorily, that's all the board can do is deal with one item. So, the purpose of the meeting tonight, some guidance was released from KDHE last week, and also some guidance from KDHE and the State Department of Education regarding COVID and contact tracing. And so, we have done some research into that. We've worked with the Health Department a couple of times last week. And essentially, the guidance that came out from KDHE and KSDE gives school districts the opportunity to suspend contact tracing for 30 days, beginning on February eight, or January 18th. So from January 18th to February 18th, we would have that opportunity. So, that's what we're here tonight to kind of share, kind of what that would look like, and then ultimately, hope to get direction from the board tonight on whether you want us to continue doing things like we've been doing them up to this point, or whether or not you would like us to take advantage of that 30-day suspension of contact tracing. So, I think Glenda and Heath have some information to share with you.
And I'm guessing that we'll probably all jump in and talk at different points, but I'm going to get it going with our most recent data. In the fall, we had 520 positive students with 130 positive staff. Since we've come back in January, we've had 412 positive students and 151 positive staff. So, when the new variant came in, it kind of took hold and ran. Our new guidance from KSDE, and you do have a copy in front of you, a hard copy. The new guidance in short is shortened quarantine to five days isolation. And then if people are fever-free and if the symptoms are resolving, they may return to school on day six and wear a mask for five days. The Health Department also would stop contact tracing to focus on disease investigation. However, the initial guidance that came out said that high-risk sites such as schools and long-term care facilities would need to consider, would need to continue that contact tracing. Then later, we had additional guidance from KSDE along with KDHE that said schools may temporarily suspend that contact tracing for one month, as Dr. Carlin said. They did, in their wording, state that they recommend continuing the current process if at all possible. And since you have that in front of you, we're going to skip the, going to the link. The high points, as we saw the differences as leadership talked. The new timeline is of course until February 18th, and then it would be reviewed by KDHE and KSDE. Our current timeline would be continue the plan that was started in July. Under the new guidance, close contacts, there would be no tracing. So specifically, what this will look like is when we do close contact tracing at the high school, we draw that circle around the positive, and those folks have to wear a mask for 10 days. At the elementary school, since they stay in the same room with the same group of kids all day long, that entire classroom is designated close contact, and they wear a mask for 10 days. But that would say no contact tracing, so that would change and look different. Close contacts, as we have now, are that modified quarantine that I just described. Our color system would continue, and that would be a nice way to keep parents notified. That will be on our webpage. Green means no positives in the classroom. Yellow, in this case, would signify that there's a positive only. It wouldn't, right now, we leave the positive up until the quarantine is over, and that wouldn't happen now. That would signify we have positives right now, but it would not signify the contact tracing piece of it. Where right now, we signify positive status and the quarantine status. Communication, KDHE recommends a letter be sent out to all families notifying them of this change, and also notifying them that the regular remind messages that come home that says, "Your child is now a close contact," will not continue. And that's what we do right now, is we send out letters every single night to anybody that is considered a close contact. So one thing that will look a little different, but will continue, is the household contact. So this is different, so if there is a positive in the house, what does that look like? So if they are symptomatic, of course, they would quarantine, and that is the five-day quarantine, and then come back on day six and wear a mask for five more days. If they are asymptomatic and they are a household contact, if they have tested positive in the last 90 days, or they're fully vaccinated, they may still come back to work or school as long as they remain asymptomatic. If they are not vaccinated or have not tested positive within the last 90 days, then they would do that quarantine period of the five and five. So if they are not a household contact, then they would continue coming to work and school. So that piece would continue, pretty similar, except for the length of time, as what we've been doing, the five and five instead of 10.
Just a quick question.
Yes, sir.
The 90 days, I know that's been in our protocol from, I think, day one, but that seems like an awful long time.
Well, I tell you what, as someone that's just had it, I thought it was six months and not 90 days, so I was a little sad that my period of, "You won't get it again," has been shortened, so.
Do you know if they, sorry, I was going to piggyback on the question. Do you know if there's data or CDC recommendations on where they got that 90 days?
I believe that is the recommendation with the CDC when they changed from the 10-day or 14-day quarantine down to the five-day isolation and the five-day return. I think the 90 days also changed at the same time.
So that would be on their website somewhere?
I assume so.
Sorry, Mark, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I don't have any direction I'm going with that. It's just, that seems like a long time. And there's other ideas and thoughts too, but I'll let you continue and we can.
My understanding is that is like, you're going to be immune from getting it again for those 90 days. You should be safe.
Okay, thank you.
So our yellow poster, red, green, yellow poster, green is no positives, as we said. The middle section would change. Yellow would indicate a student positive, but masks would be optional for families. Right now, again, what we do is that the students wear a mask for 10 days as a modified quarantine. But with this change, masks would be optional. Red would indicate a breakout or a cluster, as the Health Department calls it, and they would still have the authority to go ahead and quarantine a class or kids or a school if they saw an outbreak. And that would, so we would keep that red status if we needed it. Questions?
I'm, can I throw this one out there and then you guys can, before I forget it? I'm curious on the red status. How does the Health Department, what's their process of notifying you or the schools of that, or the parents?
So, right now, currently, and this would continue, we send all of our positive cases to the Health Department. We're required to report those. So whenever they see several in one class, in the past, it's been three, but that may change. I don't, I think they're looking at maybe redefining what a cluster would be. Then they call the parents and they notify us of the status. But they take care of all of the notification.
So that, I guess that's what my question was.
Yes.
Who else has questions?
I do. We're, we have here the household contact, and then yes, and then it says the 90 days are, we're fully vaccinated. So it seems all the data that is out there is vaccinated and unvaccinated are getting it. So I'm curious why we're still differentiating when vaccinated and unvaccinated are getting this.
This is guidance from the Health Department, so I don't know that, I don't know, Doc, do you want to try to answer that one?
Yeah, I don't, I think this is all coming to them as guidance from the CDC, but I think the foundational thinking behind that is even though there are breakthrough cases with vaccinated people, there are some who do have a level of protection. So all this is just an element of trying to minimize the risk that you're going to have somebody who's transmitting it at school. So I think the logic behind having something there just goes back to that, even though they're not perfect, the chances of a vaccinated person having it are less than someone who's not vaccinated.
Anybody else?
This is really more a comment, but it's so, it's such an interesting set of facts and process to deal with. And I think it's always important for the district to err on the side of safety for our kids and our staff and our community. But certainly, things like likely to get and which strain we're talking about, and all of that fascinating evolution of experience and new recommendations from the CDC, and it's certainly a moving target. And that's what really makes it challenging for me in this seat, I'd have to say.
Are there any more questions, or then we can move on to some comments too? I don't know if Glenda wants to stay up there once we're commenting, so if we can get through the, any other questions?
Dana might have one.
Oh, and Dana?
I have a.
I knew I'd forget you, I'm sorry. I'm new to this.
Any other questions? No worries, and everything's a little delayed and sound is cutting out a little bit, so just let me, I need to repeat myself, or I think we're edited here. But I do have a question about self-identification. So are, when a student calls in sick, are we asking them or expecting them to identify? Or, I guess I'm just wondering for the mask wearers, once they return to school, or is this any child who's out sick? This may be a non-issue, I'm just, but I'm curious how we're differentiating? Because there's a lot of flu, there's a lot of strep. Or are we?
So, I may try to tackle that, and then Glenda can jump in too, Dana. So, I think part of the philosophy of this from KDHE in that guidance is that this is putting more of the responsibility on individuals, and to stay home if you're not feeling well, if you have COVID symptoms, to get tested. You know, and then if you test positive, they're no longer going to do all the contacts and the tracing of the people you might have exposed. It's then up to the individual who tested positive to notify the people that they may have exposed. I believe what we do, and Glenda can correct me if I'm wrong, but if we have a student at school with COVID symptoms, they have the opportunity to test either with us or on their own through their doctor or wherever. And if they, if they have significant COVID symptoms, if they choose not to test, then they're presumed to be positive and they go through the quarantine process. If they test and they're negative, then I think they don't have to do the quarantine piece. If they're sick, we encourage them to stay home while they still have symptoms, but when their symptoms are gone, then they come back to school. So if they have the flu, then, and they have the flu for two days, then they come back after two days.
Yeah, and I'll piggyback on that. We do also test for the flu as well as COVID, our schools do, so we can test for both of those, Dana. One of the differences that you'll see going forward, if this is accepted tonight, in the past, we were not allowed to accept, our nurses were not allowed to accept, home tests. However, now, if a home test is completed and it's positive, we will accept that as a positive, and we won't ask them to test again. If it's negative, we will still talk to them about their symptoms and maybe ask them to get a clarifying test, or just stay home as long as they have symptoms.
To piggyback on the, to piggyback on to Dana. So if a kid stays home for a day, calls in just sick, doesn't feel good, does that kid need to have a COVID test to return to school, or can they just return to school the next day?
We won't be contact tracing, so.
But now, before?
So now?
Yeah, in the current situation.
It depends on what the symptoms are, and the nurses do talk through that with the families.
Okay.
Anybody else with questions? I was also curious, what our policy now, before, if we change this, on when kids stay home and they're, it's for several days, because we've had parents that are being cautious, but maybe not necessarily testing, and then they're going, they're getting told that these are unexcused because they don't have a doctor's note. Has any of that been brought to your attention?
None of that has been brought to my attention. We have a, we have a policy that students can miss seven days.
Right.
And after seven days, the building administrator may request a doctor's note. And so, it would, we do encourage our administrators to look at all the circumstances in those cases, and that is not a policy that says they will.
Okay.
It says they may. So I would need to probably understand the individual circumstances because we have times where that is absolutely appropriate.
And times.
And times that we may need the building administrator to dig into that a little deeper.
So I guess it's basically just what we would be encouraging is if parents are concerned about that, to contact their administrator.
Contact the building principal first, and then if they don't get it resolved, to contact the central office, and we can look into it.
I just felt like there was some confusion out there on that, and I don't want parents to send their kids to school if they are feeling sick, but because they're, but not sick enough to go to the doctor because they're concerned about absences and.
Absolutely, yeah, right, yeah.
And Jennifer, I will also piggyback on what Dr. Carlin said and let you know that our Skyward system for attendance does have a quarantine code. So if we know that there's a household positive and they have to stay home because Dad is sick, we can put that in as quarantine and it wouldn't apply toward that truancy.
Okay. Any other questions? Dana, did you think of any other?
No, I'm good, thanks Jennifer.
Then I guess.
I'll just make a comment. I think this is in the right direction.
I was going to let Glenda sit down while we discuss, unless you want to stay up there.
I'll go sit down.
Okay, go ahead, Mark.
No. Yeah, mine's a short comment, so. I just think it's in the right direction. It's certainly appropriate to consider, you know, the state's changes and adjust accordingly. And so, you know, I have no concerns about this not, say, going far enough. I think the way I'm seeing the national and the international discussion, and even some of the comments out of DC here in the last day or two, you know, we may make some adjustments in the next month or two on top of this, going the same direction. And I hope that's true. But I think we owe it to the public to make an adjustment based on KDHE's new recommendations, and I think this is good.
Thank you. Who would like to comment next?
Yeah, I would agree with Mark. I think that Kansas Department of Health Environment basically sending a pretty clear message that they're overwhelmed trying to keep up with everything. And if they're overwhelmed, I think that obviously our staff, this has been a huge burden on the staff of USD 457, the teachers, the administration, to continue contact tracing. So I think it's a signal that they're getting to the point where the next guidance may be, hey, let's just go back to pre-COVID measures, if you're sick, stay home, and do completely away with trying to contact trace and do all that. So I do agree, it's signaling in the right direction, and hopefully, hopefully, things will continue to trend that way. My comment is, is I think we need to kind of align ourselves with the direction the state's going as well, just in the fact that I think this has been a big burden on our school district, trying to keep track of all this, all the spreadsheets that I see and I know that you all create. That's a huge amount of work that has been brought on to our district by COVID. So if we could take a month reprieve from that, I think everyone would appreciate it.
Jackie?
I agree.
I agree as well.
And Dana, does she have?
Yes, and Dana. Dana?
Yeah, I agree as well, and I really hope too that at some point, me, we, the staff, to me, that's what I worry about a lot, and I want to make sure that we're checking in on them to make sure that, I don't even know what the right word might be, but I agree with the other board members. I think that this is a good move, but I do hope that we're paying attention and then asking our staff how they're feeling, what's happening in their classroom, and how we can, how we can support them.
Anything else?
And I think I'm on board with what you guys are saying. I still have concerns about, not forcing, that's not right the word, but requiring kids to choose between being in school or wearing a mask, because I do know that we still have a lot of students and teachers that struggle with that. So that's the only concern I really have on this. I wish that masks would be optional, no matter what. Those who feel the need to wear it for various reasons should have the choice because there are truly ones that feel they need it, and then there's others that simply don't function well in school, teachers and students when it's required. I also get the impression from people I've visited with that when it's required, it causes a divide between students, and there's bullying on both sides of it. One child needs to wear the mask for specific reasons, either themselves or at home, and if that causes everyone else in the classroom to wear a mask, but they're not comfortable with it, there's bullying on that side, or ones that choose not to. It's been both directions through all of this, and I just, if we can't do, get that, to that today on that point, I hope we can get there quickly where the mask can be optional. Because even the CDC and Fauci has stated that it has a minimal difference. He doesn't, they don't say it doesn't work, but it possibly gives a false sense of security. I'm not trying to change your minds, I just, that's where I've been all along, and I feel like I should still speak that because I'm a representative of our community, even though I'm sitting in the leadership chair. And the only other one is the fully vaccinated treating that differently than the unvaccinated. We're not necessarily sure who has natural immunity and who doesn't. I still think it would be preferred if that section of this flow chart was taken off of there and it was treated the same also, again. Perhaps a false sense of security if you're vaccinated, and students or teachers may feel apt to go to school even though they have some symptoms when, because they're vaccinated, when they should stay home. Otherwise, I think it's a step in the right direction. Those were just the concerns I had on that. But I am willing to support whatever the pleasure of the board is to. And right now, the two options that, unless we choose to adjust something within this, our two options are to do what we have been doing with the contact tracing and all of that, or go with the suggested recommendation that was given to us, or potentially make changes on there if that's what you would like to do, so. Any responses to that, or if we're ready to make a motion? If Dr. Carlin has anything else he wants to say?
Nope.
I guess that's where we're at.
Well, I, just to get it on the table, I'd move that we accept the recommendation of staff to make these adjustments as presented.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second that.
Thank you, Dana. Mark has made a motion and Dana has seconded it. Any other discussion you'd like to have before we vote?
Does, did this come directly from the Health Department, or was this created by the district and the Health Department?
I think a combination, but it was as a result of the meetings of the parameters. They have a whole bunch of other documents that deal with these things individually, and we tried to consolidate what they had given us into one thing that's easier for people to understand.
As part of the discussion, we have this 30-day window. Does that necessitate us revisiting this in 30 days?
Most likely. We have a regular meeting scheduled on February 21st. That's a Monday. This guidance is good through Friday, the 18th of February. So, continuing with the same theme, that we're all hopeful that things are going to be getting better by then, and if anything, we're maybe looking at the option of, could we be relaxing other restrictions? But we, I would hope that we would be good through February 18th, and then could deal with this again at the regular meeting on the 21st of February.
I did have one more question. If they take a test here and have a negative test, does that keep them from having to wear a mask, or do they have to continue to wear a mask?
If they've been positive?
If they're just at contact in their household, and they have not tested positive.
So if they are asymptomatic, so if you're looking at the hospital and it says they have not been vaccinated?
Right, so if it's a household contact, and yes, they are, but they haven't been vaccinated, we have to stay home for five days unless they want to return with a mask?
Yes, on day six, they would have to wear a mask for five more days.
But if they test negative during that time, do they still have to wear the mask?
They did not give us a test-out policy, so we would have to ask the Health Department on that.
It would be interesting information. I'll, at minimum, hopefully include that when we revisit this again.
And again, that's kind of their choice to define what that protocol is. So we will get the answer to that, and we will give you the answer. And I would assume if, you know, if that's allowed, then, you know, we can do that test if students request it. And if it's not allowed, then we'll get you that information.
But it's the school district that's enforcing the mask policy when they go to school.
That, that's an issue that they either do that, or the Health Department quarantines that kid as a household contact. And it would be our responsibility to report those household contacts, if we're aware of them, to the Health Department. So that is, they get to determine that. We don't, we don't get to say, like, we want that to be an option.
Right.
That's up to them to make that determination. They have the legal authority to do that through their, through their health orders.
To quarantine, or force someone to mask, or require someone to mask? Because I didn't realize that the Health Department was still able to require people to mask.
They, they have the, they have the opportunity to force them to quarantine if they're not wearing a mask. They can't make them wear a mask, but they can make them quarantine. And when they do this, then they are giving a choice.
Okay, that was kind of around that way, but I'm still trying to understand it.
And that's my understanding.
Yeah, no, I get it. I, in my perspective, it gives the impression that they're able to require them to wear a mask to go out in public. Does that make sense?
The way I heard that they are as an alternative to quarantine.
Yes, and I, and what I didn't realize is that they could still require that.
Apparently.
Yeah, that's why I was just clarifying for my understanding.
And that quarantine period would still be 10 days, or five days?
The five plus five more, that's my understanding.
Five at home and then five with a mask when you come back. So it's still a, they put on a 10-day.
So if you're not willing to wear a mask back to school, you're, the quarantine's still 10 days, is what I'm hearing?
Trying to use my teacher wait time, so if you need more time to process, let me know.
Again, my expectation is we're going to revisit this in 30 days.
Right.
Right. Anything else?
I think in the.
Yes, Dana?
In the document, in the additional documentation that we were given too, I think.
In the document, in the additional documentation that we were given too, I think, i- if I'm not wrong, didn't KDHE, their recommendation is that all students should be masked, right, at this point? So this is not, we're not quite, you know, going that, like taking that further step. Am I, am I right in that or did I read that incorrectly? It just seemed to me like that was the overall recommendation. So we're not necessarily doing that part.
Correct.
Of the recommendation. What we're doing tonight is essentially the contact tracing and then a couple of the follow-up measures, correct?
Yes. And both, I think, more of a uni, they're recommending a universal masking approach, as well as they're recommending that we continue to contact trace it, you know, as we have been doing. So we're going against both of those recommendations in, in making this move. That is, that is accurate.
I, sorry to belabor this, but on the, the memo, January 20th, on the decisions, the very first item, schools will stop contact tracing, thereby put an end to modified quarantine for said period.
Correct.
So contact tracing means who've you been around? But we're still asking, who've you been around?
No, not at school. So this is referring to at school when we would have a positive case at school. And then we would, and the health department would contact trace and our nurses would assist them in providing information, who was in that classroom. And then the health department would modified quarantine those kids. You have a choice. You can quarantine at home or you can wear a mask for 10 days and return to school. As long as you're asymptomatic. And that then is changing for school contacts. So we will, we will, the health department will no longer do that and we will no longer do that. Household contacts, if you have a positive in your house, now that's a different story. There, they are going to enforce a quarantine. Does that make sense?
Does to me.
But those are for household contacts, not for school contacts. So what we are, what we are stopping doing is the contact tracing of, at, at school, basically. And follow-up question?
Well, sort of. Do we still do that daily questionnaire of health or, you know? How you feeling?
Yes.
Yes.
For students and staff?
Yes. And then if someone answers it, I have a symptom or my throat sore.
Right.
Then those responses, all of the, so it's a yes, yes, I'm fine. But if there's a no that pops up, those no's go to the school nurse. And they then talk to the student to see what their symptoms actually are.
Is it, am I correct that that questionnaire may ask things like, something like, were you at the Chiefs game? Are you, were you at a public event unmasked or something to that effect?
There's two sections to it. There's one that deals with symptoms and there's the other that deals with the guidelines that KDHE puts out about travel and events. So there are two separate, there's basically two questions. You respond yes, no to either of those. And one of them is, have you been at a mass gathering of over 500 where, in, indoor, I think, where they haven't, you know, where you weren't, where everyone wasn't wearing masks.
I'm not trying to get in the weeds here. It's just, is that a contract, contact tracing activity?
No, that's screening for symptoms. Okay? Contact tracing is, we've identified a parti, a particular positive, who have they been in contact with at school?
Okay.
From, that's what we're talking about here.
Thank you.
And this, I won't need this for decision tonight, but is that something we could see again? Because it's been a while, like through email or something?
Yeah, we'll include that.
I hadn't thought about that one.
The screener?
Yeah, the screener.
And, and it's not an absolute. Again, it's, you know, the, it's, it's a, if somebody, if somebody answers and that flags, then the nurse has a conversation with them just to check out, you know, I, I might have a sore throat, but just because I have a sore throat doesn't mean I'm gonna have to test or I'm gonna be presumed positive or, you know, it, there may be a, an answer to why I have a sore throat. It just triggers that conversation with the nurse. Who's our best person to help us ascertain, is this possibly COVID or is this something else? So.
Okay, thank you.
So to add on to Mark's, was that part of the original plan that we're amending?
That was part of the original plan, but we weren't really here talking about amending that part of the plan tonight. But yes, that's part of our plan.
That was part of the original.
That we do a daily screener.
Still trying to keep everybody safe.
Yep.
So when a student answers yes to that question of a mass gathering or, right, yes to that question, the nurse still talks to them with that, with no symptoms?
If they say they have no symptoms, then the nurse is gonna send them back to class.
Right.
Our members were going, were being sent home. I didn't look and see what it was today, but they've been relatively low. Let me just go back. So today we sent 12 students home. So it really hasn't been a very big number.
And is that questionnaire still in, on your honor system to do?
Anything else? Dana?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
I guess we still have a motion on the table.
Madam President, I might say one more thing. So this whole thing has been kind of an exercise in, in, in nothing's perfect, right? You know, we, we know a whole lot more today, almost two years into this than we did when we first started dealing with this almost 24 months ago. There, everybody wants everything to be consistent and that the algorithms work in every, in every circumstance. And unfortunately, we haven't got that figured out yet. I don't think anybody has. We all get frustrated when the CDC changes their guidance or when, when we learn more about something and, and I was incredibly frustrated when we were getting conflicting information from KDHE and from KSDE and, and happy that it provides some flexibility, but there's gonna be a lot of inconsistency of how this is implemented across the state. There are districts that are doing universal masking and have been for most of the year. There are districts that are imposing mask requirements when a certain percentage of the, the population in the building reaches positive levels and, and, and there is no definitive guidance of that's the right thing to do or the wrong thing to do. So I, I understand that we're, I guess, asking for a little bit of grace as we make these decisions, that, that nothing is perfect. I think it's important to remember that the three main priorities that we started this year are not changing. We want kids in school face-to-face. We want people safe. We want school as normal as possible. But there are times that those don't complement one another. Sometimes in order to keep people safe, we have to make things not normal. Sometimes to keep kids in school, we have to have everybody not 100% safe. There's the potential that there is gonna be some transmission. And you can bounce all those off one another. So I realize that the ultimate is we would like to have something that is, is ideal and we've covered every base. But I think it's gonna be necessary as hopefully we're in the home stretch of this, in a move back towards normal. But that we realize that it's, it is gonna probably take a series of steps to get there, because there are still issues with this. And, you know, we, we shared with you our, our data, the community data and, and our school data. And our number of cases last week was higher than we've seen. The good news is if you look at the hospitalization data, it doesn't seem to be following that trend, maybe even moving a little the other direction. But hospitalization sometimes lags behind the positive cases for some time. So we're gonna continue to monitor. We're gonna continue to look at this. But, but this thing is evolving and it is looking different. We've given you the best information we have. And we, we do think that at this point, moving in this direction is a step that is something that it's, it's at least worth a shot. It's at least worth a try. So anyhow, I don't mean to belabor anything, but I know there will be people, people out there in our community that say, well, what about this and what about this? And, and there's absolutely room for that. None of this is 100% perfect. But I will tell you that those three principles continue to be at the forefront when we have conversations with the health department, when we have conversations with building principals. And we have had those conversations over the last week about making movement in this direction and what should that look like? So, okay, thanks.
Thank you. I guess we're ready for a vote then. Would you repeat the motion? Mark?
I don't know if I can do it verbatim.
Well, I can't either, so that's why I threw it your direction.
I mean, I can take a shot at it unless you've got something written.
Basically, you say, accept the recommendation of the staff, which is KDHE, no contact tracing.
Okay, thank you. I was throwing it to you because I couldn't repeat it verbatim either, so. As the motion was stated, all in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, same side. Motion passed.
You know, I just really appreciate, Madam Chair, that, that we've had good community communicating on this and that we continue to have that. Because I think it's ever-evolving and we're gonna get out of this one of these days. It'll be interesting to see what that is. But, you know, I sure hope normal is very normal. Maybe hopefully in a month or two. We'll see.
Anyone else? Dr. Carlin, do you have anything else?
No ma'am, just see you back here Thursday.
So I would make a motion that we adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I assume you got to vote.
Aye.
Thanks Dana.